The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
And welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and the City Council for the month of October. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members of the Joint Board, please introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
I'm Michael Wong, Board of Finance.
John Speth, Board of Finance.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Nick Jones, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Thomas Paulus, Senior at St. Paul Catholic High School, Mayor for the Day.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Scott Rosato, City Council.
Sarah Lynch, Senior at St. Paul Catholic High School, Town Clerk for the Year.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. So, of course, I don't have my drawing board. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on September 10th, 2019, and the special meeting of August 27th, 2019. Is there a motion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is our consent calendar, which is items A through F. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to approve the carryovers from fiscal year 2018 to 19 to fiscal year 19 to 20, totaling $30,710 within the general fund. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is to make an additional appropriation of $88,491 within the Capital Projects Fund, Schools for Green Hills Legal. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to make an additional appropriation totaling $1,557,161 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is to decrease appropriations totaling $465,195 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, to make transfers totaling $280,484 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, to make transfers totaling $3640,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is to make an additional appropriation of $715,000 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is to make an additional appropriation of $250,000 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund as of June 30th, 2019.
Seconded.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, to make an additional appropriation of $750,000 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is to make an additional appropriation of $150,000 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2019. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is to make an additional appropriation of $1650,000 within the Mill Rate Stabilization Reserve Fund as of June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I missed the last Finance Board meeting. Is this a new fund or in... What's its purpose?
We could have Diane address that as part of her report, but we did discuss it at the last Board of Finance meeting, and it is for future use for mill rate stabilization, for future budgets, so...
Which, then, my question is, is what is the future use? In other words, is it... Shouldn't we be controlling our expenses instead of trying to put money away for that? Now, on the other hand, that's one side of the coin. On the other side of the coin is, my concern is, we never know what the state's doing with funding, so...
Well, that's part of it. The other part is that this is something that the... This is the preferred name, as opposed to debt service.
Okay.
So there's a naming issue that has come up with the auditors. And we also just really transferred a whole bunch of money into sinking funds in order to prepare for tomorrow. So it's kind of the same thing. But we can ask the Controller to address that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on item 13? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What we've just done, for the viewing audience, is ratified items that have been taken up by both the City Council and the Board of Finance. Per our charter, we meet together as the joint meeting in order to co-approve them. So that's why there was very little discussion, and we moved quickly through that agenda. The last item is our monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller, Diane Waldron.
Good evening. Let me do my monthly financial revenue and expenditure report, and then I'll come back and I'll address the Mill Rate Stabilization Reserve Fund. And then I have a few other items that I do want to discuss as well. Anyway, as you have in your report, the tax revenues actually are very consistent with last year. We are slightly ahead of... Slightly ahead of last year, though, on the prior tax revenues, approximately $175,000. I think our tax collector does a great job collecting those prior tax revenues, so hopefully that trend will continue, and we'll see a little bit more, and we can collect more than we had anticipated during the budget. Building permit revenue is at 31.7, again, slightly ahead. Investment earnings, I want to talk about that for a minute. We, right now, are at 32.4%, which is slightly ahead. We should be around 25% right now. Little concerned, because the Fed cut the interest rate over the last couple of months. So I did ask the Treasurer's Office to just give me some sort of an estimate as to what they think they will see with investment income throughout the rest of the year. Part of the issue, and why I'm concerned about it, is we did increase the budget projections when we did the budget this year. Last year, just to give you a comparison, we had budgeted... We had budgeted $925,000 this current year. And with all of the projections that the Treasurer's Office was able to put together, we estimate anywhere between $1 million and 1.17 that we would collect. In fiscal year 19, we collected 1.4 million. So there's a little bit of a gap there as far as what we think we will collect compared to last year. So I want to keep an eye on that as we go forward. Any questions on the investment income? But I think we'll just keep our eye on that, and, you know, hopefully we'll, you know, beat that. The investment income has been a good source of our surplus revenues over the last couple of years, so we would like to see that we at least have some surplus funds there at the end of fiscal '20. On the expenditure side, there's not a lot to report there. We're really where we should be at this point in time. Again, if you see anything that's 100% expended, we do encumber a lot at the beginning of the year, so there shouldn't be any cause for concern there. With regard to the Mill Rate Stabilization Reserve Fund, so, when we closed out fiscal year 2019, we had an opportunity to use some of the surplus funds that we had to set aside money for some reserves. As you know, we are doing a $25 million bond issue, which I'll talk about shortly. And one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to stabilize any kind of an impact that some of the challenges that we'll be facing will have on the mill rate. One of them, there is the senior tax relief program that has just been put into place by the Ordinance Committee, and that will be on the Board of Finance agenda for discussion at their next meeting. So there is the cost associated with that program. State revenues, we never know what will happen with state revenues, so this, again, is another hedge to start putting aside some of the surplus funds for that. Capital projects and debt service, like I just discussed. And then any fluctuations in any other major revenue sources that we might have. It will at least help us try to stabilize the mill rate. So that's one of the things that, when we were looking at the future, what we wanted to try to do to help keep the level of mill rate. Any questions on that? Okay. The other thing I did want to talk about, we have our bond issue coming up tomorrow. We are meeting with the rating agencies. We're meeting with Standard and Poor's and Fitch. The bond issue is $25 million. We will be financing a number of projects that are currently in process. The largest of them is the Memorial Boulevard School. And also, if anybody had the opportunity to see the fire truck that was outside, we'll be financing that as well. That was about $1.3 million. One of the other big projects that we'll be financing is Page Park Pool, the renovations there. I think we're financing 3.6, and there will be some other trust revenues that we hope that we can help offset the cost of that as well. The total appropriation for the pool was 4.1. So that's scheduled to happen the end of October. We'll be opening the bids, and hopefully we'll get those results out, too, as soon as those results are available. We are in the process of doing the audit. We're getting ready to close out the June 30th fiscal year. The auditors will be here in two weeks, and we always look forward to that. The one thing that I do want to just make a little bit of an announcement on, the city did receive the government finance officer's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the city of Bristol's June 30th, 2018 report. That is a report that the city has been receiving, and an award the city has been receiving for the last 32 years. So it is something that I know my office takes a lot of pride in. And with that, I just wanted to say that they also give out an award of financial reporting achievement to the person who is responsible for preparing the financials and the award. And they actually give that to Rob Emanuel, my Assistant Controller. So I just wanted to make a little bit of an announcement and recognize her for that. So that's really all that I have. I don't know if anybody has any questions on anything.
Sir the Chair, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but at our next Board of Finance meeting, there seemed to be a lot of Board of Ed legal fees this year. You know, in one month, there was about $16,000, and then $6,000. And so if we could have them address or get you an answer as to what's driving those fees, please.
Anything specific on the...
They all just say BOE Legal. BOE Legal Services. Some say Special Education, some say General, but just to kind of give us a flavor of what's the driver behind that.
Yep, we can definitely get that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Controller? Okay, thank you. Okay, as the Controller mentioned, we do have Tower One that is parked outside to the rear of the council chambers. If anybody would like to go out and look at our new million-dollar apparatus, you're welcome to do so. We are going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and we will reconvene the City Council meeting in about three minutes. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October City Council meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members of the City Council, please introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly.
Greg Hahn, First District.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Thomas Paulus, Senior at St. Paul Catholic High School, Mayor for the Day.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Scott Rosato, District One.
Sarah Lynch, Senior at St. Paul Catholic High School, City Clerk for the Day.
Thank you. Tonight, we have lots of guests in the room from St. Paul. We also have some presentations, and we have announcements that are going to be shown on our board, as well as a couple of videos that we'd like to share. But to begin with, we'd like to start with recognizing Councilman David Mills, who is here for his last City Council meeting. So we have a couple of things planned. I'd like to start off by saying that it has been a pleasure serving with him, myself, over the last two years. And whenever he's been called upon to fill in and do whatever's needed to be done, he has been there. And it's been just a great working relationship, and we're definitely going to miss him on the council. I'd like to start on my far right, if there are any council members who would also like to offer remarks.
Yes, Dave, I'd like to thank you for your service to the council, the city, and the community. You've set the bar quite high insofar as political discourse is concerned, and that's sorely needed in today's political arena. And you're a trusted voice of reason, and I'm proud to have served with you and consider you a friend. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Peter.
Dave, you and I discussed this a couple weeks ago. And coming on to City Council these last two years, one thing that I always appreciated about you, although we may have disagreed on topics from time to time, there was never a question. You were always striving to put Bristol first above political impacts. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the work and the leadership you gave to us, and you'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, thank you for serving District Three very well. I know that we have some constituents that get in touch with us frequently in District Three. And again, you've been just a gift to Bristol, your service, both in the sports world and here at City Council. You definitely represent what Bristol All Heart is, and we will miss you. Thanks.
You know, I got to tell you, one of the first people I talked to when I decided to run for council was Dave Mills. And I can't believe it's been four years we've been sitting next to each other. We have spent countless of hours in committee work. And I will tell you that there's no man with greater integrity than Mr. Mills. And it's been a pleasure, Dave. Thank you for all of your service to the city, and thank you for being all of our friends.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, I just want to say that since I've come on to the council, you've been more than helpful to me in making me find my way in the ranks here. As being a young leader, I look forward to you and your leadership and what you've taught me in more ways than you know, all around. And I just thank you for all of that. Good luck.
I'd like to ask Justin Malley, our Economic Development Director, to come forward and say a couple words. As many of you know, Councilman Mills has been one of the key leaders in establishing our brand, which is Bristol All Heart. And he has worked closely with the Marketing Committee, as well as the Economic Development piece, which is so tightly entwined with who we are as a community and how we define ourselves.
Thank you, Mayor. So Dave Mills knows my niece. Do this a little different. So my niece has been friends with Dave's granddaughter for many years. And so my niece was... We were talking one day, and she mentioned knowing Mr. Mills. She said that she knew him. And I said, "Oh, I know Dave. I work with Dave." And she said, "You know Dave Mills?", just like that. Like as if Dave was a celebrity. You know, "You know Tom Cruise?", or something like that. And I kind of... What's funny is I took it... I reacted in that vein, and I said, "Yes, I absolutely know Dave Mills. I just saw him last week." And I was all proud about knowing you. So I guess the point of that is, is that you're the... Dave Mills is the kind of person you're really proud to know and to work with. So I guess I'll speak on behalf of the City Hall staff and City of Bristol staff. Dave's a very calm, reassuring character. I think most of us know that about Dave. And sometimes, working in City Hall's not calm or reassuring, so it's nice. It's very easy to work under someone like Dave, who we know will support us and encourage us to do good things. So thanks, Dave. Your commitment to the city of Bristol's unwavering, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
So on behalf of everybody at City Hall, I'd like to present to you a framed logo that you've worked so hard on with some sentiments written by everybody here who's worked with you over the years.
Thank you very much.
And then from your colleagues on the City Council, we gave you a little reminder of everything.
I wasn't even here for the beginning.
Well, we weren't sure. We thought it was a close approximation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all that you've done.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, Susan, we have more photo ops to come. Okay. So this does not conclude what we've planned for tonight. We actually have been working really hard to live and breathe the All Heart brand. And we are going to show... Everybody can be seated. We have a little slideshow. We are doing a couple of different things tonight. But for those of you who entered City Hall through the north entrance next to the Police Department, you may have seen our new mural, or not? Oh, okay. That has been created, and we have a quick time lapse. We did this over the last two weekends. Don Nielsen led the effort of letting in our painters over a couple of Saturdays in order to brand our main entrance off of North Main Street. So now, if we go out there, you will see that we have our logo and the gears that are part of it as now on that large wall near our handicap ramp. This is Nick Staffko, who is the artist that was hired in order to do this. He's also done some projects for us in the parks. And we're really excited about our video. I think we all got the idea. So, there it is.
That's great. The gears are beautiful.
And that's our finished product. So we're going to take a break for five minutes so that everyone who's here can extend their own personal well wishes to Dave. We do have refreshments in the meeting room. If everybody would like to grab a cookie, you could also take a quick walk to the north entrance to see our branded entrance. But before we do that, we have also one more surprise. I'd like to ask Councilman Mills to come up to the paper, and we are going to unveil our newest... We're going to try at least. It's now behind us, as well as in front of us as we deal with our agenda items. So thank you.
Thank you. May I have just a moment?
Yes, absolutely.
I tried to write down a few notes, but the one thing that got to me was calm and... What was the other word?
Reassuring.
Calm and reassuring. Obviously, nobody saw me back coaching football in 1970, where I was not very calm and sometimes not very reassuring. But it certainly was another chapter in my life that was very special to me and something that I had spent 26 years as the head coach at Bristol Eastern and enjoyed a little bit of success, but enjoyed meeting a lot of people and enjoying what we have to them. It's kind of unbelievable that at 66, someone comes to you and says, "Did you ever think about running for City Council?" Most of the time, if you're 66, you don't even think about running. And then, obviously, getting involved in politics is probably something you don't do either. But I said, "Well, you know, it could be a challenge. It could be something that I might enjoy. I might enjoy doing." I didn't know anything about politics. I was never involved in politics at all. When you're working as a teacher and coach, you don't have time for politics. So it's, you know, you're basically doing what you do. But it was a great experience for me. I'm glad I got into it. It's nice to go undefeated in something. It was to win four terms. It was nice to be able to do that, so that was great. My campaign manager, Jack Hines, is back there. We had a little party a week or so ago, and we mentioned the fact that we had won four races, and three or four people came up to Jack to see if they could sign him on as their campaign manager. So it's, you know... But seriously, I just want to thank everybody that I've been involved with. It's been a great experience. The thing that isn't so surprised to me, but it was wonderful to see that people are here for the right reason, and you don't really realize that. You know, when you're home and you're reading the paper or you're thinking about other things that might be going on in the city, et cetera, you just say, "Well, big deal." Sometimes you agree with them, sometimes you don't agree with them. But you don't really spend a lot of time thinking about them. You just go on. But once you get involved in the process and you see the people and the time that's put in by everybody, and the thought that's put in, you really appreciate what people do. I know that they're paid here, and I know that they've probably earned five or 10 cents an hour for the amount of time they put in. But they just do a great job. So my kudos are kudos to my fellow councilors over the years. It's hard to believe that it's been 10 years that I've been involved here. I want to thank the mayors and all they've done. I want to thank the mayors and all they've done. And, you know, the other thing is that the people here that work at City Hall and all the departments, again, they're here for the right reason 99% of the time. They're here to make the city better. And it's great when you come to them and you have a problem, they're there to help you. They're not trying to put you off. If you come to them with a situation that you think is important, they're gonna take it as important, and they're gonna try to help you with it. So, I want to thank them. I want to thank the people of Bristol, obviously, for giving me the opportunity to serve. And serve it is. It's something that you do because you love the city, you love what's going on, you're trying to make a difference. And the big thing is that, you know, a lot of times you don't have the opportunity to have a say in what goes on. At least being involved in politics and getting involved on the council, if something, if there's a matter that comes up, at least you can go in and vote your conscience and learn more about it. So, I would encourage anyone, whether it's 66 or whether it's '26, to be involved and try to get involved in the city and do your part. I want to thank those that -- some of you know that I had a little tragedy in the middle. So, in my 10-year career, there was only eight years that were served. And I want to thank all the people that were so supportive when I lost my wife in the middle of my term. It was certainly very important to me. I am so pleased to be a part of the city, live and work in the city. Having taught for 36 years, I certainly enjoyed that. Hopefully, I made a difference in people's lives at that point. And then, again, serving eight years here as a City Council person, hopefully, I've added something to that. And hopefully, there's another 10 or 15 to go that I've got, I can do something else and try to enjoy that, so I'll be happy to do that. The last thing I have is, I've written down here is time, and no one knows how much time we have. So, my suggestion is to make good use of each day and try to make a difference in someone's life as often as you can. And I think if we all live by that, the whole world will be a whole lot better, and I think Bristol will continue to be a great community. So, again, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Okay. May I please have a motion to recess for five minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we will recess. And again, we have some refreshments in the meeting room, which is off of the rear of the chamber. The mural is on the north entrance, so please take a moment, grab a snack, extend some well wishes to Councilman Mills, and we'll see everyone back in their seats in four minutes and 40 seconds.
Can I have a motion to come back into regular session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on September 10th, 2019, and the special meeting of August 27th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, now I am going to turn over the running of the next section of the meeting to Mayor Tom. So, he will start off with public participation. And the first thing that we're gonna do is our nonprofit spotlight and the employer presentation. So, would Councilman Dan McCary, Commission Chair, Dan McCary, please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of the council, chamber guests, visitors, our viewing audience, and as difficult as this is for me to say this year, Yankee fans As Chair of the Bristol Commission for Persons with Disabilities, I am very pleased to announce this year once again, the 2019 National Disability Employment Awareness Award, month of October, to acknowledge the efforts of a local employer who exemplifies a spirit of community partnership by providing employment and career opportunities for individuals with disabilities in our community. This year's award recipient is the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, who was nominated by CW Resources in recognition of their organization's longstanding partnership, including daily janitorial crew services provided by CW and the free use of the club's technologies room for transition services for CW employees. I am pleased this evening to have Jay Maya, Vice President for Staff Development, and Michael Bellantuano, CW Resources, Inc. Program Manager. Before presenting the award, I'd like to ask each of them to come up and to comment briefly on their longstanding partnership.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Bellantuano, Program Manager at CW Resources, and just want to thank everyone for having us tonight and giving us the opportunity to present this to an employer who definitely exemplifies what community is all about. Sharing technology with those that are disabled, being able to give them the opportunity to show them what they can do on a daily basis. These opportunities aren't there every day. And because of the great city of Bristol and the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, we serve over 100 people daily in the greater Bristol community. And these folks, let me just tell you, they warm your heart, they do such a service to this community. And thank you so much to the City of Bristol for receiving them with open arms. And again, employer like the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, without them, some of their dreams wouldn't be possible. You guys do so much for the community. My son and daughter actually received services from the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, and the outreach is amazing, what you guys do. And now, with the disabled community, it's just another feather in your cap. So, just wanted to thank you guys from the bottom of our hearts. I asked some of my consumers to come here tonight, and unfortunately, their response was, "Sorry, boss, we gotta work." So, I tried, but I just wanted to really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys for everything. And City of Bristol, thank you so much for your support. And you may recognize us, if you've ever received meals on wheels, CW Resources does about 5,000 meals daily, and we reach seniors all over. So, that's probably what you recognize us from, but we've been here in Bristol since 1964, and we're not going anywhere. And thankfully, because of this great community, and again, the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Maya, Boys and Girls Club. Just want to thank Mike and CW Resources, the Commission, and the city. You know, takes a team to get things done, and, you know, that's what the City of Bristol's all about, you know, working together for a common cause to help, you know, help the kids and help the community. So, I'm all for that, and I've been all about that for years, and it's a great collaboration and blessed to be here and want to thank everybody. So, thank you.
City of Bristol Commission for Persons with Disabilities presents this certificate of recognition to the Bristol Boys and Girls Club in recognition for its employment practices and longstanding commitment to hiring and gainfully employing job-ready Bristol citizens with disabilities. Signed, Mayor Ellen Zappusasso, this date, October 8th, 2019.
Tom can present. Congratulations.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks a lot. Go ahead.
Mayor Tom.
Mayor Tom.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call on Chief Jay Kalakowski of the Fire Department.
Excellent job on the pronunciation, by the way. First time out, that was perfect. Good job. As many of you know, this week starts our Fire Prevention Month. It used to be Fire Prevention Week, and that expanded to Fire Prevention Month, and really, it's fire prevention throughout the year for us. Last week, we were lucky enough to have one of our great community partners visit us down at Station 4. ESPN came down to Station 4 to do some photo shoots to promote their NFL Live Event, or Life Show, on Saturday. They have a segment called Damien Stumpster Fires with Damien Woody, former offensive lineman for the Pats and a couple of other teams for that matter. While they were there, our marketing director, Don Nielsen, wrangled the ESPN film crew into doing a PSA for us to promote Fire Prevention Week. And without further ado, we're gonna show that to you on the screen. Just one added note that this was done in the first take, so I think I have a couple of movie stars in the making in the Fire Department. I'm Damien Woody of ESPN, and October is Fire Prevention Month. And remember, when you turn your clocks back to replace the batteries in your smoke detectors. Be careful in your home using open flames and candles.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Next, I'd like to call on Mr. Kerry Dupont of St. Paul.
Good evening. I'm Kerry Dupont, President and Chief Administrator at St. Paul's. On behalf of our school and our students that are here this evening, I want to thank Mayor, I want to thank you specifically for giving us the opportunity, making this happen again. I know you've mentioned many times that this was something that being able to shadow department chairs and so forth was something that happened many years ago and stopped, and it was something you wanted to start again. And so, I thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank our register of voters, Sharon and Kevin, who did an awful lot of work in planning for the election itself, the mock election, and oversaw it last week. It was a great opportunity for our students. I know that our students who shadowed today could attest to that. Being given the opportunity to experience an election live, if you will, was great. Great. And then, today, to the department chairs, to your department chairs, it was an amazing day for our kids. I know that each of them has their own story. I know when they came back to school, they were bubbling and couldn't stop sharing all the things that they did in one day, which was amazing. And so, to your team here, thank you for making it a day that I'm sure our students will never forget. And so, on behalf of St. Paul, all of our students, our students who are here, maybe, are we gonna, can I ask them to stand, maybe, I have to be recognized? So. No, they represented St. Paul very well today, but they represent St. Paul well every day. So, congratulations. You guys make me very proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call Cheryl Thibault to the stand to talk about youth services.
Thank you, councilors, mayors. And before I do, Dave, thank you very much for all your service. You've been a mentor and a friend, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
So, I would like to just share my thoughts on the combination of youth services, and I'll just read from what I have because it speaks from my heart. By the way, Cheryl Thibault, 73-yard drive, Bristol. Good youth service programs are evidence-based, trauma-informed, and data-driven. Working with each youth to improve academic performance, improve family dynamics, and prepare the youth to succeed at home and in the community. Balancing accountability, community protection, and competency toward development provides the greatest benefit to our youth. Researchers have found that these programs reduce recidivism, out-of-home placement, substance abuse, and school failure. Privacy rules, compliance criteria, all play vital roles for this most vulnerable population. I see this every day in my nonprofit. The tremendous success that we have is driven by our unique services and programs offered, but mostly through our properly trained, educated, and licensed staff. So, with that, I urge you to reconsider combining youth services under Parks and leave them as their own department. Thank you for your consideration.
Item four is our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve items A through K?
I'd like to make a motion to remove item G from the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion to remove item G?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to ask our Development Authority Director to come up here and discuss this item.
So, very quickly, this is, project goes back probably about a year, six months to a year. Actually, this all started through a relationship I have with Debbie Lombardi, who owns Barter Business Unlimited. We worked with Debbie years ago on a project, and Debbie told me about a company in Avon that was basically looking to expand. So, we obviously got in contact with the company, with Capri and her staff and her family. She's somewhere. And, you know, the mayor and I went out there, developed a great relationship with Capri. There's a strong Bristol connection there that maybe, you know, Capri, if she's here, may be able to touch on.
You're right.
But the motion itself is, one of the incentives that the city has the ability to pursue with companies is a tax abatement. So, obviously, that helps as companies, in this case, their almost pride is starting up sort of a new division, and the tax abatement helps during those first years, in this case as they're gonna be working out of Off Valley Street in Bristol. So, obviously, that was important and something that the company wanted to take us up on. The project, this approval, occurred last month at the BDA, and it's here before the City Council because it's a, this type of tax abatement through the 1265B Connecticut General Statutes Program requires approval both of the BDA and the City Council, so that's technically what we're doing tonight.
Thank you.
So, maybe Capri is here, if you want to add any color to this? Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Auntie Cal.
Capri. I say we're a tag team. So, first of all, before we get to this business, honestly, I'm just amazed by this city. It really feels like a hometown with, obviously, a desire to move forward and really help those that are in the community, bring new people into the community. I mean, just the tribute to you alone and what people have to say, it means a lot.
It does.
It really does. And so, when we, this unveiling of the All Heart, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, that's what we say always about our own family business." So, to make this somewhat brief, we have a fourth-generation family business located in Ava, and Miller Foods. My grandparents bought a farm in 1950, my aunt's parents, my mom's parents, and they have been in the food business for many years. And we have a division of our business, which is Omah's Pride, which is a natural raw pet food that we produce in Avon for pets. And we also have a division for people, obviously, with our turkeys that we do at the holidays and all of that. But we're really looking to expand. So, we have a family farm in Avon, and we're looking to, you know, take part in a community that really wants to help us to grow. So, I happened to be in Bristol one day at BBU, and we made a connection with Justin. And honestly, it really means a lot to have the people that are working with you and your communities, to bring people in. So, the genuineness of their visit, and the mayor also, really made a difference to us. So, we had many opportunities in different places, and we selected Bristol because it also has a connection to my grandmother, who actually worked at New Departure, World War II. She was, I say, she's the original Rosie the Riveter. So, she--
You can see her office right across where you go in 95 Valley, so like, there's a connection in many ways.
Yeah, it's a great connection, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here and being a small family business and wanting to grow and really utilizing this space as an e-commerce distribution space and having this help from all of you. We do appreciate it. We really do. It means a lot, and it's going to help us to move forward, and we're hoping to continue to build on this and grow and continue to stay in this area and be able to give back to the community as well.
And more employees and make it better for everyone, and really, it's awesome. I grew up in Avon, and my mother was from Cary, but you guys feeling the-- it brings tears to my eyes because, really, Bristol is a gift to your community, and it's so nice that we're part of it. So, we got the All Heart going. Really, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about what, about our business, or?
Where can we buy it?
Oh, okay, online, right over, no, we're not in there, but over here, online, come out to Avon or online, we'll deliver right through your door.
I have a question.
Sure.
How are your chicken pot pies?
Actually, we, I have to be honest with you. We don't make them ourselves there because we have a USDA facility, and you need one for cooking. But if you've got a recipe, we're definitely gonna work on it.
No, I'm a consumer. I'm not a chef.
I want to know what you like.
I'll follow up on that. Yes, thank you.
We'll talk about it later. We'll follow up.
Thank you. I have a question as well. How many employees will your business bring to Bristol?
Excellent question. So, we look to bring initially November 1st, so we're looking to get in here very quickly. Five to seven initially, and this part of our business is really the growing aspect of our business. So, our space in Avon is gonna be used for manufacturing, and we're gonna be distributing out of here. So, we're gonna launch all, actually, 50 states. We have about 30 or so states right now. And by this expansion coming over to here, we'll be able to get to all 50 states, so it's pretty exciting. So, we're looking to build on that as, you know, as quickly as we can.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to both of you. To recap, Article G, to award up to a five-year, 80% real property tax abatement to Miller Foods, Inc., doing business as Omah's Pride, as an incentive to relocate distribution and associated activities to approximately 12,500 square feet at 95 Valley Street.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And is there a motion to approve Articles A through K excluding G?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And on to item five, our reports and committee reports. First, the ordinance committee, Councilman Pilaski.
Both the motions that we are presenting tonight are recommendations from the ordinance committee on work that the committee has, has, has addressed. The first is the, is regarding Section 5, excuse me, Section 5-19 concerning fees. In accordance with Section 21F of this charter of the city of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced as presented. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 4:50 PM in the first-floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Mayor, what I'd like to ask you, if we can do, is to move up an item from, item number one from the addenda into committee reports because it's consistent with the ordinance committee report. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 4:45 PM in the first-floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter. This affects an ordinance, Section 23-5, concerning penalties and offenses.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the Salary Committee, Congresswoman Fortier.
Item 5B is to approve the creation of a new position of Deputy Superintendent of Parks Recreation Youth and Community Service. This will be a BPSA salary level eight position as proposed and refer to the Board of Finance.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item C is to approve the creation of a new position of Youth and Community Services Supervisor, BPSA salary level six as presented and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item D is, sorry, I'm just trying to follow these in my, to approve the reorganization of the Department of Parks and Recreation and Concept as presented and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The last item from the Salary Committee, to approve the establishment of a memorandum of understanding between the city and BPSA regarding a stipend for the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and the Real Estate Committee, Councilman Pulewski.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is from the Real Estate Committee, a motion pursuant to Section 7-163 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The Real Estate Committee, acting on behalf of this full City Council, requests that the city clerk to set a date for a public hearing to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Bristol Health Group for city-owned property located at 51 High Street, Bristol, Connecticut. The public hearing should be held on October 29th, 2019, at 4:45 PM in the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, and for the city clerk to publish and said notice in accordance with the statute.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, Councilman Rosado.
I'd like to call the Commissioner of Police, Police Chief. The Acting Police Chief.
Chief for a day.
The chief for a day.
Hi, my name is Michael Farrar, and I'd first like to just speak out on behalf of myself, and I think I could speak for my peers as well, to just thank the mayor and all those involved for giving us this opportunity to shadow this day and kind of just learn more about our local government and the different facets of that. So I got to start off my day by pulling over my father, pulling out of a bank. So that was pretty fun. We got to tail him for a little bit, and he was really confused. You know, he was already having a bad morning, car wasn't starting, so, you know, we got to add to the fun. After that, we went to a regional committee. I was actually, I was given the chance to actually lead the agenda and work through the committees. So that was a really amazing experience, and we also worked on some parliamentary procedure, so that was nice to see. From that, I was given a tour of the precinct, so I was able to see how everyone, all the way from just a patrol officer all the way up to the chief, works together, how things get done. I mean, my favorite part there was definitely the, the control room. So it's basically, it's like a room with five setups, and it's like 40 monitors in total of all the dispatch calls and everything that goes on. So that was really cool to see how that's all organized and how that works efficiently, making sure there's always a responder to any calls that come in. So that was basically my day, and then we ended with some pizza, and now I'm here. So I just thank you again for the experience and have a nice night.
Okay, thank you, Police Chief. Councilman Mills?
Yes, I'd like to, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call on the Parks and Recreation person for the day.
Hello, my name is Ben Speaker. I was the Parks and Rec person for the day. I am a junior at St. Paul. First off, I'd like to thank you guys again. It was awesome being here today, seeing how you guys work and being around. So we start off, we went to go see the pool, the indoor pool, and seeing that was, that was very, very cool, learned how everybody works in it, and it was quite humid in there.
Yes, it is.
And then after that, we went to, we went to an elementary school to teach a class how to make natural cleaning supplies, natural cleaning, like squirt bottle. And those, that was actually really cool to go and see. It's not really that often, well, especially in my town, that you see people come out, the Parks and Rec come out and actually teach the kids at elementary school. And I thought that that was a great outreach into the community and people, and the kids getting to know their Parks and Rec department, their town workers and stuff. And after that, we went to go tour the parks and seeing how the Parks Department, nobody was sitting around when we went to the, to see the-
That's good.
To see their offices, and they, everybody was working. I was very, very surprised and, well, not surprised.
Impressed.
Impressed, yes. I was very impressed, and I thought Bristol was a well-put-together from the parks side, I've seen, and I thought it was a great day. Thank you guys for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Director of Parks and Recreation. That was Ben Speaker from Torrington. Next, Councilman Pulewski.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call on, from the Registrar's Office, Sammy Bray.
I had the privilege of shadowing here today during a very exciting time with the election coming up next month. I got to learn about all the steps that go into setting up for an election between the filing system, setting up the different machines, and even going out to the different polling locations to set up where everything will go for parking and things like that. I even got to register our Mayor of the Day, Thomas Paulus, to vote in the next election, which was very exciting. And I think the most kind of inspiring and educational moment of my day was learning that the two registers of voters are both a Democrat and Republican. And in a world with so much political tension and arguments right now, it was really wonderful seeing two people from two different parties getting along and working together so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy, from the Registrar of Voters. Councilwoman Fortier.
I'd like to call up our Acting Assessor for the Day, Martina John.
I'm Martina John, a junior at St. Paul High School. And as an Assessor of the Day, I had an honor to shadow the Assessor, Mr. Thomas Donato, for the day. He gave me a tour around the Assessor's Office and taught me what the assessors do. And we spend time, the majority of the time at ESPN to check the renovation site for the future assessments. And Mr. Sean Trudell, Associate Director of the Construction Operation, Jeff Stefina, Mechanical Expert, Walter Raymer, Senior Vice President of Taxation and Accountings, gave us a thorough tour around the campus, which was a lot of fun. And it was nice to see how the local governments work, and I thank everyone here to, for giving us such a wonderful opportunity. And thank you.
Thank you, Martina, Town Assessor. Next, Councilman Han.
I'd like to ask the Acting Tax Collector, Richard Scott, to come up and give a report, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am Richard Scott, and I am a junior at St. Paul Catholic High School. And today, I had the honor of shadowing the Tax Collector Department, and I have learned many things today, such as that there are three major types of taxes that are collected, which are motor vehicle taxes, real estate taxes, and personal property taxes. I also learned that the tax collector is also really closely connected with the Assessor's Office, and they actually have a door which connects, and it's pretty, that was pretty cool. So also, I also got to find out like what the mill rate was, which this year was 38.05, and how like the mill rate actually connects the taxes and all of that, and how the assessors' assessment of houses have to connect to the taxes that people pay. I also got to experience how they put the taxes into their system, the QDS system, and I also got to help them out with that too as well. And as many of you were probably wondering, poor kid got yelled at by tax collector payers all day, and that certainly was not the case, and everyone was very happy, and I think that's because the tax collectors that we have here are very supportive and friendly to everyone, and it's no wonder why the town of Bristol has a great tax collection rate of 98.8%. Again, I would like to, again, I would like to thank everyone, or the town of Bristol, for giving me the opportunity to be here today, as well as the people that I shadowed in the Tax Collector Department. Thank you.
Thank you to Richard, our Tax Collector for the day. Next, Councilman Kelly.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I would like to cede the time from my committee report to the Acting City Clerk for the day, Sarah Lynch.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Lynch. I'm a senior at St. Paul Catholic High School, and I had the pleasure of shadowing the Town Clerk today, Ms. Therese Park. I learned that death and marriage records are public, but birth certificates are not. And I was also able to learn about vital statistics, as well as going to a special vault with records not open to the public. They take minutes at City Council meetings, and I was able to see the process of how e-recordings of various documents, such as land grants and mortgages, are proofread several times before going into the vault of public records. I'm extremely grateful for this experience, and I would like to extend a big thank you to the mayor and all who made this day possible. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to cede my announcement and report time so we can hear from the Mayor of the Day.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mayor Zoposasu. I'd like to start with a thank you as well. This opportunity is just unbelievable. Here in high school, we have the chance to shadow city officials and walk in their shoes for an entire day. It was just an awesome experience. I started out my day with Mayor Zoposasu in the morning, meeting with the Town Clerk and the Town Clerk for the day. We went over tonight's agenda and made sure we knew what was going on and kind of rehearsed so I wouldn't say things that aren't so good here at the meeting. Yeah, so that I knew what I was doing. And then after that, we, I got to sit in on an attorney's meeting, which was, was very interesting. It was a good block of time. We had a coffee cake to help us, you know, pass the time. We talked about lots of interesting things, the noise ordinance in town, leasing issues, public purchase of private lands, the situation with our high school's turf fields, actuarial contracts, foreclosures, the opioid crisis. Very informative, eye-opening experience for me, certainly. And then after that, we went around and toured all the different departments. I got to check in on all of my, my fellow students who were shadowing. That was wonderful. I learned a little bit about everything. I talked to the Town Clerk about, about absentee votes. I went and got myself registered to vote, which was something I didn't expect to do today, but I'm glad I got it out of the way. And overall, an inspiring day, just to, to see what goes on in our city, to shadow our, our current mayor and to see everything she does. I mean, and I only saw a little snapshot of it in four hours. I know she must do so much more for our community. A big thank you, thank you so much.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Sharon Kawicki and Kevin McCauley for all the work they put into this, because I really do believe that programs like this have value, and I'm really glad that this was such a success today. And all I can say is that Bristol Eastern has some work to do next year to beat the students that we had this year. So for all of the St. Paul students, I know you've had a long day. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and you're all excused, except for Sarah and Tom, they got some stuff to finish. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, our unfinished business. It's an update on Center Square Parcels 1 and a portion of 2 and 3. What we're doing tonight is we are going to clarify the motion that needs to be done as we finish up the letter of intent. So what I'm going to be looking for from my colleagues is a motion to authorize me, the mayor, to enter into and execute a letter of intent to purchase Parcel 1, as well as a portion of Parcel 2 and 3, Center Square, by Tobacco and Sun Builders, Inc., subject to the review of the Office of the Corporation Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any, and we have one abstention from Councilman Pulewski, who has a conflict of interest. Moving on to new business, we do have a matter to be brought onto the agenda regarding Fire Headquarters. Do you have that motion, Councilman Pulewski? Okay, so we are getting close with our renovation projects, and we were hoping to catch the agenda for tonight based on the review that just took place.
Thank you, Your Honor. A review team consisting of staff of the Board of, Board Members from both the Fire and Public Works Operations approved the selection of a, of Silver Petricelli and Associates, Inc., as a firm most appropriate for servicing the project, and have a motion to award contract 2P20-016 Architectural Engineering Services relative to mechanical improvements at Fire Headquarters to Silver Petricelli and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $78,000, and to refer the, to the Office of Corporation Council for contract review, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the contract.
Second.
Discussion- Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, do we have any resignations?
Mayor Miles Jennings resigned from the Bristol Historic District Commission.
Okay. Is there a motion to place that on file and send a letter of thanks?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are just a few appointments for tonight. The first are to the City Energy Commission to reappoint both Tom Regani and Sheldon Scott for three-year terms, which will bring them to October of 2022. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Bristol Historic District Commission to appoint J. Daniel Mike to replace Jason Wright, Alternate Member, Section 2-9 resignation, for an unexpired term to January of 2021. So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, there is still one vacancy on the Bristol Historic District Commission, and it is going to require a Republican or unaffiliated voter to take that vacancy. The next item is Housing Code Appeals Board, and that is to appoint alternate Alan Marco to replace Joseph Gielladino as a regular member. Mr. Gielladino passed away last month, and this is an unexpired term to December 31st, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And there is also another vacancy on the Housing Code Appeals Board that also must be filled by an unaffiliated or a Republican. The next set are to the Inland Wetlands Commission. These are mayor's appointments and do not require a confirming vote. The first is to reappoint Tammy Kelly to an unexpired term to 5/21. And the second one is to reappoint Daniel Massaro, Alternate Member, to an unexpired term of September 19. Not sure if that's correct, since it's last month. So, it might be, we'll review that one, but he was a Section 2-9, we'll at least bring him back to be a current member, unexpired term to a date pending. And then the last one, for Board of Public Works, is to appoint Frank Stosky to replace Morris Lovero, who resigned, for an unexpired term to February of 2020. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'd also like to ask for a motion to send a letter of thanks to Commissioner Lovero for his years of service on the Public Works Board. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do need to go back up to new business, because I did neglect to ask Councilman Han for a real estate motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hereby move that the matter of a potential lease of the city-owned property at 273 Riverside Avenue, also known as the Hostess Building, be referred to the Real Estate Committee. I further move that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Okay, before we make a motion, can we just correct that the address has just been corrected by the attorneys for, it's 296. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so that's the motion, is there a second? Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the referral to the Real Estate Committee?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to the Planning Commission as well?
That was included, he did say that.
Okay, the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And then the last item on our regular agenda is to approve the submission of a grant application to the Commissioner of Education and accept the grant for the Stafford School roof replacement at Stafford School located at 212 Louisiana Avenue. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we go into our two executive sessions, I'd like to move to the addenda, where we have two items. The first is Addenda Item 2, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all documents related to a grant application and access agreement to Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank to fund an environmental assessment of 273 Riverside Avenue, known as the J.H. Sessions Factory, and to refer to Corporation Council and Board of Finance. So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, Mayor, it's 296, isn't it?
No, we're now back across the street.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Motion has been made, and second, and is there any discussion? Obviously, this is our continuing pathway to make this property clean, so that we can continue with the RFP process. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item on the addenda is to place on file the response by the Zoning Commission regarding their review of the mobile vending units. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like to ask Corporation Council Cliff to come forward and let us know who will be joining us in Executive Session 11 and 12 on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Off, we're number 11 on the matter of City of Bristol versus Coppermine Properties. That would be Assistant Corporation Councils Lacey and Stig and myself. And with respect to item number 12, the Workers' Compensation Matter of Lynn Kelly versus the City of Bristol, we have Attorney Eric Bartlett from, I'm sorry, hang on a second, from McGann, McGann, Bartlett &amp; Brown, our outside counsel. Also Attorney Lacey for background. I'd also like to bring in our Controller, Diane Waldron, and also our Personnel Director, Mark Penny, and of course, myself.
Does not bode well when you're asking for the controller to come to an executive session. Okay. Okay, so that's what we'll be doing for Agenda Items 11 and 12. I'd like to ask for a motion to go into Executive Session.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And just, I'd like to take another opportunity to thank Sarah and Tom for your work tonight with the City Council, all the other students, those that are still here, and the department heads for making today very memorable for everyone. We're going to be in Executive Session for a while, so we may not see many of you when we come back out, so thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. All in favor of the Executive Session?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's just one. There isn't another one.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to come back into public session.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any motions that have come out of Executive Session?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of Lynn Kelly versus City of Bristol, WCC-001977407, for consideration of a payment of $125,000. I further move that Attorney Eric Bartlett be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the settlement.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention for the record from Councilman Kelly. Okay. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, sir, a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion...